We want to welcome everyone to the McDowell County Board of Commissioners' monthly meeting, and we will call the meeting to order this time. We always begin with a prayer and a pledge, so we would like to ask everyone to please stand. And tonight, Commissioner Tony Brown will listen to our prayer, and Commissioner Patrick Ellis will listen to our pledge.
Let's bow our heads. Father, we thank you for this day, for all you mean blessings. We thank you, dear God, for helping us through this time of crisis, Father. You have been so good to us. And we thank you for all of the emergency services and first responders and police departments that have been involved in this. We thank you for all the help they have done and assist in our county. And, Father, we thank you for FEMA tonight and all the other organizations that have come in, and it has truly been a blessing to this community and this county. We thank you for that. And, Father, we pray that you just be with us in this meeting tonight. Pray that you'd guide us in everything that we say or do, Father, would be to glorify thy name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Attention. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me see it. Okay, gentlemen, at this time, we'll go ahead and approve the minutes. You've had those minutes, you've reviewed them. What's the pleasure of the board?
So, let's take...
Okay, discussion, all in favor, say aye. And the opposed, like, sign. We've got tonight's agenda before you. Are there any additions or deletions by staff and/or commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add something to the agenda tonight to get, in order to get a little more clarity on my behalf and the board's behalf on animal control, I'd like to have that put on the agenda tonight.
Okay, so we will add that under new business, animal control. If the board says approves that.
Move to approve.
Okay, move to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
No.
And the opposed, like, sign. Okay, gentlemen, let's move to our appointment schedule. Tonight, we get the honor of recognizing Mr. Chris Simmons. Commissioner Tony Brown brought Mr. Simmons' achievement to the board's attention, and so, Chris, if you don't mind coming up, sir. It's good to see you tonight, and good to have your family with us, and this gentleman right here is what I would call one of the best, actually, the best in the nation, sharpshooters of the world.
World.
World, excuse me, the world. Gets even better than that, Chris. So, Tony, go ahead and tell us a little about Chris.
Well, you know, I've known Chris quite a long time, quite many, many years, many, many years, I guess, but he's, Chris has always been just an exceptional young man. He's always been very respectful, and he's always loved the outdoors. He loves hunting, and he took to shooting at an early age, and he has mastered the art of shooting, and so, in doing that, I'll let him tell a little bit about what he accomplished, but he did go to Italy and world competition and come out in first place, and that is something to accomplish. So, it's an honor, on behalf of myself and this board, Chris, to have you standing here before us tonight, and it's an honor for us to be able to recognize you and the achievement that you have accomplished in that realm of shooting. And so, we're very proud of you, and we want to, we want to share you that tonight.
Thank you, y'all. So, yeah, I was born and raised here in the county, started shooting in high school in McDowell with the ROTC team, tracking my age 2004, won three national championships at McDowell High, and been shooting ever since. Like Tony said, last year was the world championship, and it was held in Italy. Took a two-year qualifying process to make that team, and there were six of us that went overseas and represented the U.S. And that discipline was long range, it turned higher, I believe, versus 28 countries, around 320 shooters from all over the world, and I was fortunate enough to win that and bring that title back here in McDowell County. So, pretty proud of that. A lot of years of practice and hard work goes into a law builder, just don't understand what it takes.
Chris, how much, how long would you say practice? You brought that up. So, how many hours a day would you practice? And how many rounds would you get, three?
I try to shoot at least an hour a day. I took a new, a new job, shooting full-time now, so that number will go up, but probably the two months before, before the match, I was shooting twice a day. I'd get up before work at six o'clock, shoot until I had to go to work, and as soon as I got home from work, I'd go straight down to the range and practice several hundred rounds a day for two to three months before.
Awesome, Chris. We'd like for you to introduce your wife tonight, too. She, I say she's here with us, and she, she played a big part in your success, I know, by, you know, following you and helping you out through this and being patient and being the good, good wife and the good mother.
Yeah, without a good wife and children, it'd be hard to do. They have to be very understanding, because it takes a lot of time and dedication.
What was the distance on the long-range shooting in Italy?
For that, so we shot 300 yards, and that was a little 22-long rifle.
It's amazing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Lynn, anything you wanted to add?
Proud of you, Chris. I remember watching you at the high school shoot when I was SRO up there, so we are proud of you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, y'all.
Okay, Chris.
Congratulations. Great honor. Good job.
Okay, Chris, so we've got a resolution. We want to honor you, and so the board needs to take official action first. So, what's the pleasure of the board concerning the resolution and recognition for Mr. Chris Simmons tonight?
Moving on.
Okay, do you have a second? Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Okay, Chris, I want to read this to you. Why don't I say Tony read it, since you...
I don't know if I...
You want me to read?
Says, "McDowell County Resolution in Recognition for Chris Simmons. Whereas Chris Simmons was part of a two-year selection process to represent the United States of America in the inaugural event of the International Precision Rifle Federation Realm Fire World Championship. Mr. Simmons excelled in his training by arriving at the range each day before daylight and training until dark every evening, running 10 to 12 different positions in a 90-second timeframe firing hundreds of rounds daily. And whereas Mr. Simmons competed with the top shooting competitors from 23 nations on August 18th through September the 3rd, 2023, at Pangarita?"
Yeah. That's close enough.
But anyway, that's a place in Calzone, Italy. But, and whereas the three-day event had competitors battle a challenging course of fire at different distances, shooting from both supported and unsupported obstacles, long-range shots, and moving targets, all within tight time constraints, and whereas Mr. Simmons won the International Precision Rifle Federation World Championship by representing Team USA on September the 3rd, 2023. Now therefore, be it resolved, the McDowell County Board of Commissioners are honored to congratulate Chris Simmons on earning the championship title, not only representing McDowell County, but the United States of America, with respect and admiration, his diligent training and precision to the prestigious sport. This resolution shall become effective upon adoption adopted this 14th day of October, 2024."
Chris, will you have your wife come up and your children? We'll get a picture with you right here, okay? Yeah, let's give another round of applause. Okay, let's move to item B on our appointment schedule. This is our Helene Emergency Response. We have Mr. Keller with us, and I want to say before he comes and speaks that we are so proud of the work that him, his agency, our local, state, federal partners, our local business owners, our local chamber, there's so many, our college, our school system, all the people who had a part in the EOC operations, county staff, that was something to behold going down to their, that Emergency Operations Center and watch local law enforcement, federal people coming to go, and National Guard, FEMA. So, William, we want to say thank you. I mean, it's amazing, the operation that you guys ran down there. So, we're so glad to have you here tonight. You look like you've had a little more rest now than what you did when this first started, which you deserved, and need some rest, but thank you, so the floor is yours, sir.
All right, good evening, and thank you for allowing us to present an update this evening, and thank you for all of your support through this historic response. Today is day 20th, or day 20th that the Emergency Operations Center has been activated due to this historic storm that has required an historic and unprecedented response from county, state, and federal agencies, and the numerous partner organizations that make up the whole community approach to disasters here in McDowell County. This afternoon, on our North Carolina briefing, they stated 38 states, as well as teams from Puerto Rico and Guam, or in western North Carolina, assisted various counties with this storm response. I'd like to start with some of the pre-storm activities for those that may be watching at home, or those in the audience, so folks understand, the response to this disaster started well before the storm ever struck western North Carolina. It began 48 hours in advance of Helene. Emergency personnel began warning citizens of the flash flood threat and encouraged temporary relocation away from local creeks, streams, and rivers. A door knocking campaign was conducted in high-risk areas where thousands of printed flyers warning people of the danger that was to come were distributed. This was followed up by a reverse 911 call through our NICSOL system, and I would note that's only the second time in our history that we have done a reverse 911 call. That message hit over 24,000 phones, which distributed the warning message, urgent relocation to higher ground. A secondary door knocking campaign was followed up on on Thursday, September 26th, and it was conducted from, or by emergency personnel from fire, rescue, law enforcement, EMS, and emergency management, to warn residents again about life-threatening flash flooding that we forecasted to occur on Thursday night into Friday. McDowell County Schools and McDowell Tech closely partnered at the Emergency Operations Center, and schools were canceled in advance to ensure everyone's safety. As the EOC became back activated, all personnel throughout emergency agencies were placed on standby and station, emergency stations become staffed. Equipment and supplies were pre-positioned throughout the county. One emergency shelter at Glenwood Baptist Church, which has generator pre-connect from a prior mitigation grant, was activated on Thursday morning at Glenwood Baptist Church. The process of rainfall event on Wednesday night dropped over 10 inches of rainfall in McDowell County and led to numerous swift water rescues occurring during the overnight hours, and I would say put emergency crews in substantial amount of danger due to the complexity of some of these rescues, especially in the Old Fort area. As Helene struck western North Carolina on Friday morning, the McDowell County 911 Center was inundated with emergency calls. Many of these calls reported life-threatening emergencies due to flash flooding. Over 760 calls were processed by our center and by sister centers, if you will, specific to McDowell County, and I'll explain that in just a few minutes. 760 calls through the height of the storm and in the hours as the storm passed by. Communication infrastructure collapsed in western North Carolina due to catastrophic damage to utility lines, including fiber, which carries a large majority of our 911 lines. These lines that service the 911 center rerouted outside of the disaster area. Many people may have wondered in our press releases, why did the 911 calls go to Johnson County? That was determined, it was, the infrastructure was stable in that part of the state, and instead of going to a neighboring county that was experiencing the same type of disaster, they took the calls, rerouted them outside of McDowell or western North Carolina, and then communicated back on the Viper network to McDowell 911 from Johnson County, relayed the information as to where the emergencies were occurring. The Viper network experienced an overload of traffic in western North Carolina and created significant challenges for emergency personnel. As the storm passed, over 100 citizens were rescued by helicopter. Those were, the majority of those were individual pickoffs off of mountainsides in small areas where the canopy wasn't thick, to where those that were either injured or stranded were picked off by helicopter crews and transported to a safe location. Over 200 were rescued by boat or ground crews. One specific rescue in Armstrong Creek area took over 24 hours to complete, with a McDowell search and rescue team hiking nearly 10 hours to reach this injured person near the Armstrong Creek Fish Hatchery. Climbing through down trees, navigating unstable slopes, the patient was eventually reached and airlifted out to the trauma center. Fire departments in McDowell Rescue immediately went to work, assisted DOT with performing cut-and-shove operations to clear primary travel routes to access communities, and the operation continued on the secondary roads to ensure citizens had access to emergency services. Our top priority after the storm passed focused on life safety conditions, including those air rescues, which required a substantial amount of coordination to ensure air safety of the numerous aircraft that were in the county, as well as safety for the responders on the ground. A total of four FEMA urban search and rescue task force from four different states were searched into McDowell County and were utilized to do precise searches through some of the hardest-hit areas. A base camp for first responders was established at Nemo Cross and Church on Barnes Road next to the EOC, and at one time, over 1,000 emergency personnel, both local, state, and federal, were working in McDowell County. Special thanks to the Nemo Crossing Church, who housed over 600 out-of-town emergency responders at the base camp that was established. Another top priority as the storm passed was quickly searching basic commodities into each community, led by our volunteer organizations, Assistant in Disasters, known as VOAD, that was led by Jerry Lewis. The McDowell County Schools, Dr. Gritt, and McDowell Tech, Dr. Kelly, surged key leaders of those systems into place at our warehouse to bring that operation up and to establish routes and a distribution pattern, and at one point, we had 16 different pods that would be in service out of the warehouse. We've now expanded with the VOAD assistance to three different warehouses where commodities are stored and distributed, and there's been numerous other organizations, both nonprofit and faith-based, that have stood up additional points of distribution in their community to make sure no one goes hungry and to prevent any suffering in this community from this disaster. This Helene hotline, 828-652-3241, is the main number for anyone requesting assistance, whether they need commodities, they need transportation to the Disaster Recovery Center for FEMA, they need a welfare check on a loved one. This hotline was going 24 hours a day and will continue to be answered around the clock, but we've adjusted some logistics to where at nighttime hours, it's moved into our communication center. As of this afternoon, we have two missing persons that we are still looking for in McDowell County. We have one confirmed fatality and one other death that is currently under investigation and waiting for final determination from the Chief Medical Examiner's Office. As we continue search and rescue missions, we focus on entering Phase Two to ensure that we were focused heavily on human services, with community comfort stations being placed at Old Fort, First Baptist Church on East Main Street in Old Fort, where there is even continuing now and in the foreseeable future, free laundry trailers, shower trailers, and bathroom facilities. And this was in place right after the storm to ensure folks had access to their services. There's another comfort station at New Horizon Church on US 221 North, near Hitch Chapel Circle, and these will continue to run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We've made sure that our citizens have had access to free medical care, especially in one of the hardest-hit areas in Old Fort. That free health clinic ran by the North Carolina Office of EMS and supported by North Carolina DHHS is operational at the Old Fort Training Depot at 25 West Main Street in Old Fort and will continue to run for the foreseeable future. We've worked today with North Carolina Office of EMS to request resources to stand up an additional clinic for the northern end of our county, and information on that in the next couple of days will be forthcoming. Phase Three that we're also currently in is coordinating volunteers to assist citizens with debris removal. We're keenly aware that folks may not have the financial resources to assist or to hire someone to remove debris, to assist with home repairs. McDowellcares.org is the location where these requests are being taken. Baptist On Mission is on the ground, working closely with Grace Community Church. They surged over 600 volunteers into this community over the weekend, and they've made a long-term commitment to be here for multiple years to see this project and support through for McDowell County citizens. For folks that don't have internet access, they can call our hotline, 652-3241, again, and we will enter their requests for these volunteer organizations to assist them. They're also working with Samaritan's Purse to try to coordinate services in the county as well. And I can't think all of the organizations, or nonprofits, or community groups, or faith-based community, who is, all of these folks have stepped up and done everything that they can and everything that's been asked of at the EOC to take care of this community, to prevent suffering, and to make sure no one goes hungry, no, everyone has water. It was a tremendous operation, and one that continues. We're providing substantial support to the town of Old Fort as they were devastated by this disaster, working in close coordination with the mayor and other town officials. We have an incident management team that continues to work alongside the town to ensure that they have every amount of assistance they need moving forward. We have utility crews from the town of Jacksonville, Edington, Pineville, there's numerous towns that have been here assisting Old Fort, and we're going to continue searching resources in the weeks to come to make sure they're on a path to full recovery. FEMA has one DRC, or Disaster Recovery Center, where folks can come in and sit down and talk to FEMA representatives for individual assistance. We have asked for a second site to be stood up at the Old Fort, or in Old Fort, and we're awaiting that to be approved, but the first site that is operational, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. each day, seven days a week, is at the McDowell County Senior Center, 100 Spalding Road, near the YMCA. We expect to stand up DSNAP for disaster food nutrition services later this week, so folks should be looking for a press release within the next 24 to 48 hours on that. I will mention that we still have one emergency shelter in operation at the lower level of the Senior Center on Spalding Road that is currently being managed by the American Red Cross and supported by the Emergency Operations Center, and that shelter will continue until that need is no longer there. We do have Disaster Survivor Assistance, or DSA workers from FEMA on the ground at Old Fort. Once again, today, they were at the Old Fort Post Office assisting individuals with signing up for FEMA assistance. There are multiple ways to file for assistance, disasterassistance.gov, also through the FEMA app, in person at the DRC, and then the 1-800 number, 1-800-621-3362. And then we also have our match partners and community forum doing, or assisting with FEMA assistance, sign up for FEMA assistance at the Marion Training Depot.
That is correct. Right, Marion Training Depot.
Debris removal, I'll defer to the county manager in just a minute, because he's been providing substantial support to the EOC with regards to debris removal. I will mention our Old Fort EMS station did have swift water go through the station. It is uninhabitable at this time. We are still servicing the town of Old Fort through a partnership with the Old Fort Fire Department. Our crews have been relocated there, and we're waiting on a temporary trailer put up at the Old Fort EMS station to get us back in operation there on East Main Street. We continue to work closely at the EOC with local government entities, as well as email out to our nonprofits and faith-based partners this morning on how they can apply for public assistance in the criteria for doing that. This is going to be a long and extensive recovery process. I think you don't have to look forward to what our friends in Haywood County went through back in, I think it was 2021, and they were still recovering from this. What I want the folks of this county to know is, is this is a resilient community, and there are people in every organization, many of which are represented in here tonight, and so many that aren't here, but are working every single day to address the needs in this community. It has been absolutely humbling and one of the best experiences of my life and of my professional career, and I've seen quite a few disasters in the areas I've traveled to, but to see this community come together like they have, to see neighbors helping neighbors, friends helping friends, and people doing every, no one questions, "I'm not sure we can do that." Folks have just stood up and said, "I can do it. We'll get the job done." I think it's a sign of hope, it's a sign of inspiration, of what we are truly made of in this community. And I want the folks that may be watching this, or may read this in the newspaper, to know, your home may have been destroyed, your life may be upside down, but we will walk with you every step of the way to a full recovery, and our team is committed to doing that, and I know our partners are committed to doing that, and we will get through this together. We've had a motto for many, many years of one team and one mission, and that truly came through the night Helene struck, and it's a night I'll never forget, because the amount of people that needed assistance quickly was astounding. I want people to understand in closing, the facts that have come from our Emergency Operations Center are truthful, that is truthful information. There has not been hundreds of people killed in this disaster in McDowell County. That is false. We have one additional death that is under investigation, and when the proper process plays out, we will officially announce the determination. We are looking for two individuals in this community. It is so important for there to be facts in the community and folks not spreading rumors about incidents that are not correct and are not true. I've lived at the, or I've worked at this organization for 26 years. We have no reason to report incorrect facts, and our daily press release will continue to report what has happened in this county during this disaster, good or bad. We're accountable to everyone in this county, and you can always count on our organization to deliver the facts to the citizens of this community. It's an honor to serve and to lead this response and recovery effort, and we certainly appreciate your support.
William, I'll say real quick, that's a fantastic summary. I do want to say this, that we've only had one confirmed and one pending death, and I would, I would just go on record and state, that 48-hour campaign to go to the areas that knew would be affected by this kind of a storm, this was a historic storm, one that we've not seen since this community suffered through 1916, is what they're saying. But, but your door knocking campaign, your, our partners going out there with you, fire departments going out there knocking on these doors, talk to the guy who got rescued out of a boat in Old Fort, right off the main street, he said a guy knocked on his door, said, "You need to get out now." He opened the door, and water was five feet high, and they took him out in a boat, rescued him. But I really attribute the work prior to this event occurring, that was instrumental in keeping those numbers way down, because the loss of one life is tragic.
Absolutely.
Tragic, but I think you save lives by the work that y'all guys have done. Your men... Your men and women are tremendous and we, we believe firmly, without a doubt, no reservation, that we've got the best in the nation right here in McDow County. And here again, to our partners, you couldn't do this by yourself and just being in that operations center, saw men coming in and out going, what y'all did down there was amazing. Just to watch law enforcement at one table from Highway Patrol, Sheriff's Department to city officers there, one group over here, just amazing what y'all did. And so I'll be quiet, but I do want to say it's amazing what you did, your group did. And churches, I mean, I'll just say this, these churches that stepped up to bat, that went out there and passed out meals, opened the doors up to be pods, distribute items to people who needed it was instrumental too. It didn't get any better than McDow County. I mean, from everybody in the room, I'm looking through the room, I mean, you know, partners, groups, organizations came together and truly it was one team, as you said.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I saw something that honestly didn't know that we would ever witness again, whether it be here in this community or in our nation, but the love that people had for each other, you know, there was no such thing as the rich or poor. There was no such thing as people with faith and people with non-faith. There was no such thing as black, white, brown skin color. It was just a total love everybody had for each other and everybody had the same common goal in mind and that was to help each other and protect each other. And it was just to see the results of that was really a blessing to me, to see people work together like that.
It was, it was truly amazing too of, in certain areas, specifically Olfort, of people, firemen, EMS, different, different agencies taking risks of getting to individuals that needed help and the sacrifice those individuals had. It, it was a true team effort, as you mentioned. I do think that seeing the EOC, seeing the distribution center, it was truly amazing. The efforts from Sheriff's Department, from the North Carolina Highway Patrol, to your guys, to FEMA, to just all of them. And it was getting, getting assistance where assistance was needed was very, very, very impressive. And you are right, it is special here.
Okay?
Well, I appreciate everything that you and your team and all the other agencies that came in and helped. Like Commissioner Brown said, it's been amazing to watch communities come together and help each other out. I know on our street, we were all just pitching in to help each other out. My mom's neighborhood was destroyed in Swanonoa, so they're going through a lot up there. But just to see community come together and take care of each other, it's, it's absolutely amazing.
William, you know that almost every time I've ever talked to you, I've told you how much I appreciate your leadership with the emergency services here in the county. I have made friendships from those agencies out of the county and out of state, federal agencies, that I will never forget through this. We're going to hear in the coming days, William Keller, we're going to hear Ricky Buchanan, the sheriff, we're going to hear Alan Lawrence, Chief of Police, we're going to hear FEMA, we're going to hear Army Corps of Engineers, we're going to hear all of those agencies and individuals mentioned. But we may never hear names of ones that did things that we know nothing about. We're not going to hear names of those that gave themselves financially, equipment, everything else to save the community. I go to bed now every night so proud of the citizens of McDow County. Fire departments, volunteer fire departments here in the county that have spent hours and hours and hours watching over their individual communities. To see people that have lost their entire home, standing in their own muddy yard where their home used to be, handing out water to their neighbors. I am so, so proud of my county. But I do want to say thank you to those agencies that came in to support us. They not only did the job that they were sent here to do, but they also embraced us, put their arms around us and loved us and supported us, prayed with us. It will never be forgotten. And I want to say thank you to Mr. Wooton, to the other commissioners for standing behind you and supporting you. You're not a one-man show and you know that. It takes everybody and this event has proven that when the chips are down, McDow County will come through.
Thank you.
Thanks, William, so much for being here tonight. Cast me with our next item on the agenda. This is item C. We have the North Carolina Department of Transportation Restoration Update and we have Mr. Chad Young with us and Scott Keller. So we welcome y'all to the boardroom tonight, so y'all come on up. And I'm sure you guys have been pretty busy too.
We have. We just want to take this opportunity to provide you an update of kind of where our operations are here in the county. So we have essentially completed our assessment of the county, the transportation system countywide, which entails almost 700 road miles. We've located 497 locations where damage has occurred to the, to the road system. Forty-two bridges in total that have been damaged and seven that have been in total losses, which require full replacement. I guess we were able to restore traffic on I-40 with the temporary repair and slide the top of Olfort Mountain with some more permanent repairs coming with some stabilization in the future, but traffic's been restored and we're also able to get the bridge over the Katahdala River on 40 stabilized to allow two-lane traffic. So that corridor has been restored for the most part to a normal traffic pattern with some narrowed lanes at the top. Of the 497 locations that we found, like I said, seven will include a total bridge replacement and 42 structures that will require a major repair. We've completed our cut-and-show operations, which entails the debris that was blocking the lanes of the roadway. We're able to get that debris moved to the shoulder and is there for it to be permanently removed. An update on some of our primaries, bit of good news, we're able to fully open 226 Coxus Creek today, so we've restored that connection to Mitchell County. With the great effort from some of our contract partners, the NHM Construction, that boat is fully paved back and open, so big to restore that connection. 226A NHM's also on that route. It's going to take us a couple of months before we restore some stabilization at the top to a two-lane pattern. US 221 North, NHM has also started repairs on the north end. They've made it from the county line to the largest slide, which is a significant distance south of the county line. But we were made aware of a wall that was lost at the bottom of that slope, which is going to take an extended time before the wall back. Hope to have that complete in the next two to three months and fully restore the two-lanes. The bridge at Mount Paradis, we have already spoken with the contractor about the installation of the temporary. The temporary will basically consist of some footers to be drilled forward and set enough to have that done in the next seven or eight weeks with temporary structure, which will follow along with our repairs at the top to reestablish that connection. NC-8, it's a pretty impressive amount of damage on 8. We've had some contractors in just to give us some quotes on that and some leave pretty wide-eyed. I think our plan at this point, if we can make the repairs to restore the two-lane roadway up to the school bus turnaround, which will restore traffic to all the homes, that'll be our first goal, would be to get two-lane traffic back to the bus turn. And then the slides at the top are significant. Those are going to take quite a while for us to fix, probably in the neighborhood of four months to have full two-lane traffic restored to the parkway above the bus turnaround. We were able to get back K Road open to the county line to help restore some relief to those in Olfort community of, Olfort Road community in Park County. Due to the condition of NC-9, we're able to provide some relief there. Pit station, the bridge in the Baxter's, we were able to install the cords for a temporary crossing into Baxter's a couple of weeks ago, well, it's a little over a week ago now. RE Burns is there pouring the footers to the temporary bridge to be installed just north of the structure, probably doing the full replacement on that bridge. It should be done in the next month with the temporary structure. Finalizing some work today and tomorrow, looking at the situation as far as accessing the town of Olfort with the repairs to the bridge over Commerce Street on 70 and loss of the bridge over Curtis Creek. We worked an agreement with NHM to temporarily shore the bridge on 70 back to a safe state so that we can reopen that bridge, providing access to the interstate to the west and then relocate a crew to replace the pier and the cap on Curtis Creek Bridge. And once we can fully open access to Olfort on the eastern end of Olfort, go back and complete the permanent repairs to the bridge over Commerce Street. So it'll take maybe three more days to complete stuff on cars, which will give us a second access until we can replace the, the cap and the pier on Curtis Creek Bridge. That's really about it. We continue to work with William, like you said, he's been great, Highway Patrol, and we continue to mobilize to areas as requested by the power companies, the company's school power and everywhere that we don't have power now. So a lot of work to do. Like I said, 497 locations have been identified. We've got crews from Alabama, Greensboro, Hosky, we've mobilized almost 100 workers and crews here from our own DOT. The Kentucky DOT is mobilizing some more crews this week. We've got contract partners in this county of a number of around 24 to 25 today. So a lot of work to do, a lot of progress has been made. That would give you an idea of where we are on the primary river system.
On Highway 70 Curtis Creek Bridge, how long did you say that was going to take? Approximate?
The same crew that's working to open the bridge over Commerce Street that's closed now for construction, they need about three days to finish. Then we can pour the cap and the new pier, because they actually lost a pier at the center of the bridge set on the creek, did it?
Right.
They told us they thought that 60 days was a fair turn.
Couple months ago.
Till actually did the salvage, that bridge and I'll go for a place. And then once we're able to restore traffic east, then we can close the west end bridge back, complete the repairs that are under contract now.
So the goal is to temporary bridges and, and just reconstruct the ones that need to be reconstructed, correct?
That's correct, yep. We have some partners at the Florida DOT that had around 700 feet of acreage temporarily that they've done, of course, they had to leave last week ahead of a hurricane coming through, but we're working on pouring those footers, getting those temporaries installed for the long term.
Very good report. Comments, questions?
I just want to say thank you so much because of the concerns of, you know, it's how I go to Marion, it's how I go to Olfort, you know, so the, there's a lot of, a lot of questions out there, but greatly appreciate the work on the mountain, greatly appreciate all the work. It's got your hands full. Some of the, some of the other smaller roads that are probably not used that much, probably looking at six months to a year.
So we've set some pretty lofty goals for ourselves. You notice as we went through the report, a lot of the major repairs on the primary system are our larger contract partners.
Correct.
We've assisted them with some material acquisition and basically given them our larger, long-term repairs, we can focus our efforts on secondary system. So our crews and the crews that are here from Division 7 and 1 are focusing on the secondary system. You know, we, you know, we set ourselves a goal for getting school back in. We pretty much met that goal, we haven't made enough of those repairs. We're to the point now that we can pick up the debris permanently, get the rest of the debris gone. And I would like to think in the next, I would like to look back six months from now and say that we're 75% complete.
Good.
It's a lofty goal, but.
It is.
I mean, that's what we're shooting.
Thanks so much because, you know, if you were the person that was up in that one area that needs, needs to get out, greatly appreciate.
We've asked them to list, no, we've restored access, basically vehicle access to every community of some sort. It's not great access, but every community does have a vehicle access. So, you know, we would ask that if there anybody that doesn't have vehicle access listed, we finished the connection to the end of Curtis Creek with one lane debris in the community and that was our last community restored, so we have access to.
Are you having any trouble at all finding materials such as stone and whatnot?
So we had, we were essentially, we've basically unloaded one quarry in the north end of the county now, which has made our drive south a little longer. We're hoping to get that quarry back online soon before it's flooded. So a little bit extended wait times, we've been picking for materials with the railroad and all these other people that need stone, but we're, I said, we haven't had a shortage yet, so we'll bring in additional loads to learn as long as we can borrow materials and keep running.
Okay, other comments, questions? Okay, there being none. Here again, thank you for all you're doing and, and the timelines and the information that we can pass out. Our community people have lots of questions, which is natural. When's my road going to be fixed? When's that going to happen? So we appreciate all your work and, you know, you guys are sort of unsung heroes too. The guys who got the power restored, definitely heroes, particularly McDow County.
And that's a big deal, getting power cut back, but you know, as we look across the division and the seven counties we work in, you know, not having water, not having power is a big thing, so we're, we're pretty fortunate here to get back as quickly.
But you guys helped with that power there by clearing the way for this, allowing it to get out there.
As I said, it's just been a group effort, the way you set up the EOC, you know, between the utility companies, Highway Patrol and ourselves, we were able to respond a lot quicker, have conversations with the power companies we didn't normally have and, you know, maybe pull off what we thought was the most important, to make a repair that restored power to a community of three, four thousand people. So we were there to give them access what we could.
What we're telling?
The state rarely gets on that a boy, you know, but Ashley and I were talking before the meeting tonight and he and I both were certainly proud of what you guys have done. You guys have really stepped up to the plate and made some accomplishments and we appreciate that.
We're there, the guys are working really hard and I feel like we've acquired every resource available and we'll continue. You know, this contract was coming in, we've not turned any away, so.
Let, let your, let the employees that work for you that you have contact with, let them know that the McDow County Board of Commissioners says thank you and the people in McDow County really say thank you for what they're doing.
They've done well, like I said, Chad and myself, I think, and most of our employees do, so it's a little extra pride in what they've got done. So we'll keep working and we'll provide another update when we get ready.
Thank you.
Sounds great, thanks so much. Okay, let's move to item D on our appointment schedule and we have the Honorable Kim Effler West tonight with the chamber, our chamber director. So she's here to give an update to the board on business activities since Helene, so good to see you, Kim.
Hello, it's great to see you all. Thanks for the opportunity to be here to present the progress and direction of the McDow Chambers Business Action Recovery Plan. Our goal is to ensure that McDow County's economy not only recovers but emerges stronger, more resilient after this historic disaster. Our plan focuses on four key areas and these are in no order, right? We need all four to lift this economy back up. Childcare center reopenings, Baxter healthcare support, collaborative recovery through the business and industry recovery resource center and direct outreach to our local businesses. I'd like to dig in just a little bit and provide an update on each component. Childcare center reopenings. Childcare was a vital concern prior to this disaster and is essential in restoring our workforce. Without reliable care for our children, many employees cannot return to their jobs. McDow County is home to 29 licensed childcare facilities, including 14 county-operated locations. Five privately owned centers are currently open and 10 facilities we are pending contact with to assess their operational status. Two facilities we know have sustained critical damage and remain closed into repairs are made. By reopening centers and focusing on this focus area, we enable our workforce to return to their jobs, helping stabilize our businesses and support economic recovery across the county. The second focus area is Baxter healthcare. Baxter is not only a critical employer, but also a vital link in the healthcare supply chain. Baxter's efforts to restore operations have been remarkable and we're grateful for their commitment to the community. Some of us visited Baxter last week and got to see firsthand the challenges that they're faced with. Last week, Baxter welcomed 1,000 employees back to work. Their dedication to remediation- Their dedication to remediation includes deep cleaning equipment and production lines to ensure safety and quality. The installation of a second temporary bridge also demonstrates their focus on maintaining access and continuity. Supply concerns continue to make national news and are being monitored closely with our local, state, and federal partners. In partnership with NC Commerce, we are prepared to support any employees who may need to file for unemployment efficiently. Our goal is to process these claims and vouchers if necessary and ensure that displaced workers can return to their jobs as quickly as possible. The Business and Industry Recovery Resource Center is a really exciting opportunity to create human connection for those that have been deeply impacted. It's a massively successful collaboration with the Marion Business Association and McDowell Technical Community College. This center has provided both resources and again, human connection to businesses and individuals who have suffered significant losses. Through partnerships with the SBA, NC Works, the Workforce Board, and the Small Business Center, we've created a space at the Harold Smith Building at McDowell Tech where businesses can access and support what they need to recover. The personal engagement at the BIRRRC has proven invaluable, helping businesses navigate grants, loans, and workforce resources. If any of you have tried to read the documents that are coming in for recovery efforts, we don't really have the mental capacity to read and understand all of these words. We really just want someone to help us. So, that's what these folks are doing at, at this center. And the last piece, I, I, is near and dear to my heart, and this is a micro-level business outreach. After rejoining as a Chamber team midway through last week, our staff has taken a micro-level approach to connect directly with our business community. Remember, there are 885 businesses in McDowell County. We want to connect with all of them. We want to know, we want to hear their voices, we want to hear if they're okay, how they're doing, how are their families, and what do they need? To date, we've connected to approximately a fourth of our businesses. Of those, 80 businesses have reported that they are now fully operational. However, we face challenges in reaching many of these businesses due to interruptions in phone service at both our office still and within the businesses themselves. Some businesses reported structural damage, mud or mold issues, but many remain determined to rebuild, repair, and reopen. Unfortunately, several businesses are total losses and will not rebuild. During the initial days following the hurricane, businesses expressed their most urgent needs were electricity, phone service, internet access, road repairs, and water and sewer restoration. Obviously, now the needs are changing. We have identified just this week, critical damaged businesses throughout the county. And what I mean by critically damaged and operable businesses, we believe there are 21 businesses in Old Fort, 18 in Marion, 15 in the northern part of the county, North Cove and Little Switzerland, six businesses in Nevo, and two businesses in Dyzer Spell that are critically damaged or inoperable. We believe that of these businesses, we may, we, we run the risk of losing seven permanently. We are, again, as we work through the micro-level approach, we are absorbing a lot of information. All of the information that is coming through us, we are trying to absorb and understand coming from, from federal, state, and local partners, we're trying to get that information out to our businesses as quickly and accurately as we can because we want to get our businesses back on our feet. The information coming in is detailed, there's a lot to it, and some, some of it is difficult even for us to understand, but we're doing our best. Remember or not, we want to support every business in this county. We recognize that other counties surrounding us may not have our strength. For those that are here, can hear me, we're here for you too. Unfortunately, there are few grant opportunities out there for affected businesses. Many relief efforts are in the form of loans and must be repaid, and I don't know if you all have noticed, but it's not been an easy year for business. October is a big month for many of our businesses, especially our tourism businesses, and this month has just been taken away, so we have that to work through. So, so we're advocating on a local, regional, and state level for loan forgiveness opportunities and grant opportunities that support this unprecedented disaster. In immediate response to these challenges, McDowell Cheever launched a donation campaign through our 501(c)(3) foundation, and to date, we've raised $67,000. Beginning Monday next week, we will start distributing small business grants to those in need, providing critical financial assistance to businesses impacted by the storm with their grants, not loans. We're proud of that. In closing, I'd like to emphasize that our business recovery efforts will continue until our economy is back on its feet. While we are not experienced in the world of disaster, we are grateful for this community and the chambers who have lifted us up in the wake of this disaster. I want to shout out to the late Norman Chamber Commerce Business Community, who supplied McDowell County with 200,000 pounds of supplies in the first few days of this disaster. I've picked up carloads from the Green Bull Chamber area. A lot of our Chamber community and business networks have really shown us a lot of love thanks to those business communities. Through the collaborative work of the Chamber, our partners, and the community, we're confident that we will recover, and we know that it will take time. We believe that this will be our sole focus for 2025, and we will not stop until our businesses are back on their feet. It hurts my heart to think that a business cannot reopen, and I'll do all that I can to ensure that this business will, will reopen, and will rebuild, and will come back stronger. Thank you for your continued support and dedication to McDowell County's recovery. Ashley, we know it's an honor to serve with you at the EOC, and this man right here is a true hero. I look forward to working with you all to rebuild and restore. I share a similar sentiment to Commissioner Green. I don't ever want to experience the disaster that we just faced, but if there is a disaster again, I want to have it in McDowell County where we can all come together and get through it together. Thank you all.
Kim, thank you so much for what the Chamber has done, and your involvement, you were down there every day, long hours you put in, and Chamber was represented 63 total businesses, and you're saying out of 63, seven may not open back up. The $67,000 received that you're gonna start giving out, not alone, but giving to help small business owners, greatly appreciated. And so, I just say, thanks for being a partner in recovery.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else you want to add?
I know, presentation. I know Amazon is convenient and it's easy, but it's a good time to buy local.
Absolutely.
That's right.
You speak to my heart there. All righty.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on our appointment schedule is item F. This is a general election update. I do believe there's election coming up here shortly, within 15, one of, oh, I missed, oh, FEMA, how could we miss FEMA? Oh, my word, let's back up to item E. We have FEMA recovery resources, and we have Natalia with us tonight, and so Natalia coming up to the podium, we're so glad you're here, and your agency is present, and you're helping the people of McDowell County, so good to have you at the board meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would have been fine if you served me. It would not have been a problem. So, I just want to say, I echo the sentiments of a lot of people. Will Keller has run an outstanding operation here in McDowell County, and he has saved thousands of lives, and we could not be in this good of a place if it wasn't for Will Keller and the staff at the EOC and all of the partners. This is not my community, but I sure wish it was. I sure wish it was. So, to that end, I wanted to get you some numbers specifically about individual assistance to McDowell County. And what I can tell you is that there have been a total of 7,400 registrations for individual assistance, that is, individuals reaching out to FEMA and saying, I, I need help. And of those 70, or 7,400, I can tell you that we have provided $4 million in aid to McDowell County residents. That's the approved number.
And you're just getting started.
And we are just getting started. We will be here for the long run. These numbers change from day to day, minute to minute, hour to hour, so these are not static, but this is just a snapshot in time to show you that the aid is getting out there, and we are happy to continue to serve. We respect the different programs that FEMA has available on the individual side, household assistance, which is what you think about, my house suffered damage during the disaster. We have disaster, or we're working with North Carolina State about disaster unemployment assistance. That's a really, really important resource that's being run through North Carolina, and we are happy to help in any way that we can, we've been communicating that to local elected officials. Additionally, there are serious needs assistance, which is the $750 that you may have been hearing of on social media. That's a one-time cash payment that's provided to people who have experienced some sort of loss. This is not a loan. None of the money that FEMA gives out throughout any of its individual assistance programs or public assistance programs are loans. These are all grants. They do not have to be paid back. I really urge people to go online and apply if possible. With the DRC opening here in Marion, that's gonna be such a benefit. I also really encourage folks that if you've got to deny a letter from FEMA or some sort of eligibility letter, letter, you understand that a no is never a firm no. You can always appeal that decision. We urge people to read the letter in its entirety because sometimes the issue is as simple as, we need your insurance policy. And with that, we can continue processing and developing that application. There's also assistance that's available on the public side, and by public, I mean think of public infrastructure, right? Your municipal buildings, county buildings, city buildings, where applicants can be the city or the state, or the city or the county M, and we can provide assistance there. FEMA crews have started doing what we call preliminary damage assessments for the public assistance programs. They are out and doing those assessments. My understanding is they start, they started this week, so they started probably today. Those will continue to come on, but for any city or local leaders who are listening, remember that the people who you have to go through is the state of North Carolina. They are gonna be your one-stop shop, and if anybody ever has questions about that, I can certainly answer those. And other than that, I really, I'm honored to serve in my position, right, as a FEMA person. I believe in our mission, which is to help people before, during, and after disasters, but I just want to take a moment that as a person, I cannot fathom the loss that this community has experienced. I will never be able to fathom this loss. And despite how much I visit here and how much I love it here, it is not my loss, but I can tell you that FEMA will be here with you the entire time and every step of the way. So, I really yield to you guys if you have any, any other additional questions or concerns that you all are hearing that you'd like to bring up.
You mentioned one thing that I've had a lot of people that have told me they applied for the 700 and were denied, and so probably they just didn't do, complete the application correctly or something.
I don't want to say that they didn't complete the application, because maybe they did, but I will say that if there is a question about a denial, absolutely reach back out to FEMA.
Okay.
Absolutely. There is never a hard no. You do have a timeline to do that. I believe it's 30 days from the date of the determination, but you can always reach back out to FEMA to get a better understanding as to why some part was or was not denied and get clarification. Something to note, I know that today, the FEMA hotline has been experiencing some technical challenges. We are aware of that, and we are working on it, but we hope to have that resolved quickly because it's not just North Carolina that's calling that number, it's everybody. And, but you can go down to the Disaster Recovery Center on Spalding Road?
Yes.
100 Spalding Road, sorry, I don't have the address memorized, and you can always ask questions there. Oh, and I want to bring up something else, just from other federal agencies. I went to a meeting this weekend that featured a lot of agriculture, a lot of agrotourism. There are programs available through the United States Department of Agriculture, through the Farm Services Agency. There are resources out there that can help any farmers, big, small, you know, in the middle, that have been impacted by this disaster. I want to really bring up the Small Business Administration. Those can help, that can help the smaller businesses or any business really that's been impacted. The system isn't perfect, but we're not gonna let perfection stop us from making progress. So.
And that can be accessed through FEMA, correct?
No, so the USDA and, and Farm Services are a different organization.
How would they access that?
There is.
USDA, state.
Yeah, so that'll be a USDA question, but I can actually get you a better answer on that one, like maybe there's one link that can be provided. I just don't have any printouts on the page, but yes, I can definitely get you that. And that way it can be distributed to your community and residents. Any other questions that you guys might have?
I don't have a question, but I do want to tell you that after working in the EOC there for a number of days and having conversations with FEMA and seeing what you guys have been doing in the community, I just want to say thank you because you guys have been nothing but gracious and supportive to us in getting our communities open back up and helping our citizens, and we appreciate it.
Thank you so much. It's our pleasure to serve, really. We, we come here, we have our mission, and we're so thankful that you let us come in and to help during this trying time. We'll be here till the end.
If you could submit all that information to Ashley, then we could get hard copies from him on it, since we're having such a hard time with her.
Yes, absolutely. That's a great, all of those over to you. That's a great call. But with that, I'll be here if you need me.
Okay, thank you so much, Natalia. Now, let's move to item F under, on our appointment schedule. This is the general election update. We have our Board of Elections Director, Kim Welber, with us, so Kim, good to have you tonight, and I know you're getting pretty busy this week, right?
We are 22 days away, so yes, it is coming. The early voting will start this Thursday, October the 17th, and continue through Saturday and November the 2nd. Due to destruction in the Old Fort area, the Old Fort early voting site had to be closed. So, a decision to close the Old Fort site, of course, at the time we had to make that decision for the board, it was lack of power, water, shore, as well as the bridge closures on 70 and the one lane bridge at the top of Avenue. So, the decision will be to have all early voting held within our office. So, no changes were made to the original times of voting. Of course, we'll be open from 8:00 AM to 7:30 each day, and as well as the three Saturdays during that time period, we'll be open from 8:00 until 3:00. So, we've added more check-in stations, more curbside stations. We'll be using most of the precinct officials that were previously scheduled to work in Old Fort. So, the extra staff at our office, we're gonna use to direct traffic to help the voters park, which is when you've got this massive amount of people, 20,000 people in, two and a half weeks coming through, that is always an issue. So, we're gonna take that opportunity to use that staff to do those jobs that will help to work and keep the voter line inside flowing better, smoother. We're gonna have a reader at the door to alert voters to have their photo ID out and ready. We want everyone to know we're gonna make it work, and it will be great for the county. One of the election day polling places was destroyed, Old Fort Number 2, which is located at the Old Fort Wesleyan Church. We checked each polling place and all the areas that had a major damage, and after speaking with emergency management and local fire departments, we were able, we believe we'll be able to leave the remaining 16 to open. Our board meets in the morning, so the final decision is theirs in the morning. Our board meets in the morning, so the final decision is theirs in the morning. But my presentation will be to house Old Fort One and Old Fort Two together on Election Day at the Old Fort Depot. And I've been in contact with Old Fort, and they assure us that we can use it for that one day. So we'll have two precincts in one area, but that way we won't have to request a FEMA unit, and we can have this for the voters in the middle up there. We've worked with our IT department to get with, to get on a compare system as a backup internet. We are now connected with a fiber line through Spectrum, but we've had connectivity issues. They've been there most of the day-to-day, like everybody else. But we just want to make sure that when the doors open on Thursday morning, we're ready and everything's good to go. We do have the backup system, backup paper system, if that's what we have to use, we'll have that ready as well. State elections passed a resolution last week, as well as the passing of the 2024 Disaster Recovery Act, made some election modifications for us to use, like state employees will be allowed to work at the polls on Election Day without having to take lead time. A lot of counties are having poll worker shortages due to just the physical issues that people have in the face. So we're very lucky, we're not, we're not seeing those shortages. We had training last week, and we have linked workers that have come out and said, "Oh, yeah, we're going to work." So we're, even though we've had one in particular, I know he lost everything, but he's like, "Come on, work, I'm going to be there." So absentee by mail changes have been implemented. Requests for absentees can be made through the day before the election, whereas it used to be the week before. So it cut off, but now it's up until the day before. We are actually, if someone comes in person and requests for that ballot, we give it to them right then, so they don't have to be mailed to the voter. So as of this point, we have over eight hundred people asked for ballots via the mail. And one of the other changes is that all one hundred counties in the state can accept the absentee ballots through the mail for another county. So if someone's displaced and they're in Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, can take that ballot and they transfer it back to us. So there's a lot of different ways that the states try to work and help, help these people to make sure and ensure that everybody will vote. Multipartisan assistant teams, which is the MAT teams, they go into nursing facilities, and also they are now able to go to the shelters, so, and help these, these folks there as well. So we, Ashley suggested that we use the transit system maybe to offer rides to voters. So we've actually been in contact with Jason and done that. So we've been advertising that the transit system will transport anyone that calls to their voting sites, as well as on Election Day to the, to all public places. We've advertised it throughout the county and made sure that the shelters, the points of distribution, and all those have that as well. But we know it's been an unprecedented event. We were very blessed that we didn't flood in at the office. As you can remember, in twenty, exactly four years ago, we had flooding from the thunderstorm we had that day, where they had done the grave work there and worked hard and got all that fixed. So I didn't know what we'd see when we got down there, but we were very, very blessed that it did flood at the Mexican Restaurant, but we were, we were very lucky. But our office is up to the challenge. We want to ensure every citizen in McDowell County will vote, and they will be able to vote and know that their vote will count.
Kim, I do want to say that you and your staff are very professional. You run a great election. There's never issues with, with your staff and the tabulation of votes, either way it goes. So thank you for being the director you are and training and the work that your staff does to make sure that we have fair, safe elections. Anybody else have any comments for Kim?
Thank you, Kim.
Appreciate you.
Okay, thank you, Kim. This time's move to item A under Helene-related business. Number one, A is debris management. Mr. Wu, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I have learned more about debris management in the past two weeks than I really care to share. Our peers down east who experience hurricanes and tropical storms have a lot more experience in this than we do, so we've had to learn pretty quickly. And I mentioned to a couple of you, what is in your packet is actually out of date a little bit. So we had been proceeding for about a week and starting up a company called SDR, which has a statewide contract. They were selected by the state based on an open bidding process some time ago, several years ago, I think 2020. And so we had initiated that process with them and a separate debris monitoring company. It's a very complex process where, under that scenario, the company would come out and pick up the waste, and they would actually count the number of limbs and twigs and everything else to make sure everything was done properly. And so we were going down that road. I was contacted Friday by representatives from NCEM, also contacted that day and over the weekend by U.S. Army Corps of Engineers with really good news. And so the Army Corps sometimes is activated in a disaster to do debris cleanup. It's very rare. I don't think it's happened in North Carolina maybe ever, but that opportunity exists for us. And so we have jumped on that opportunity for several reasons, but one of them being that if we went under the prior scenario I talked about, we would be paying out all those costs upfront. We'd be waiting for reimbursement. It could take thirty days, it could take three months, it could take three years. So we could be paying multiple millions of dollars out of county reserves for that process while we're waiting reimbursement. It could, again, it could be relatively quickly, but it could take a while. And so that could be a drain on our, our resources. And so with Army Corps, we do not do that. We essentially indicate what our scope is, and they will focus on the areas of greatest need, which, you know, may be a town of Old Fort, it might be areas in the city of Marion, it could be certain parts in the counties along secondary roads. And so it's a really good process. So we've switched gears to go to Army Corps. They do not, you would not see Army vehicles rolling down the road. They contract out that work to private entities. And so that process is, it's underway as far as the notification. I've met with someone this morning, again, talked a lot over the weekend with them. So I don't have a date when trucks will be rolling. I know that's what people want to know. When is that tree going to get out of my front yard, or the refrigerator that died or whatever else? So as soon as we have a date, obviously, we're going to push it out. And it will not be the entire county at one time. They will have to probably move geographically, and so we'll, we'll push that information as well. So if they're going to focus in the northern part, we'll let people know they're starting in the north, and here's an idea on timeline and timeframe for folks.
Will they give an overview of the whole potential cleanup from the starting point?
I believe so. Again, I've pushed a lot today for, okay, when, when are you going to start? And so I don't have those dates yet. But they will lean on the county for guidance about where probably the most damage is and, and for the concentration of damage, of course, Old Fort is our biggest area. But there's damage all over the county. So if they're looking for one specific area where there's a large concentration, it's in the town, but elsewhere, it's pretty easy to find. And so again, that, that process is, is started as far as gearing up that, the private contractor that is going to be under, under the Army Corps purview. There are three agreements with that, and I'm sorry that's news to our DOT friends because we had a conversation very recently about the county and state interplay there. And so the vendor is changing, but if we still need to be working out on secondary roads, as indicated, we will do that through Army Corps instead of the private contractor. So there's an agreement with DOT here that unless it changes, we would ask you to engage where the vendor working for the county, working for Army Corps, will, will do secondary road cleanup in the county, as well as DOT roads inside municipalities. There's an agreement with also the town and the city and our local for both that would have the county over the debris cleanup for both of those entities. It made sense for Army Corps, as well as the private company, we're going there, to have one governmental entity to interact with, just to streamline things. So just to make it clear again, the county will be working with Army Corps to make sure inside the town, the city, and many parts of the county, public roads especially, are cleared. And so I ask that you approve those three agreements that I've provided to you.
Move and approve.
Second.
Discussion question. So we've all got phone calls, and somebody, a private citizen, not a business, says, "I've got damage in my basement, it did get top of my house, my main level." So what do we tell them until we find out the date? Are they just supposed to take that debris, put it next to the state road in their yard, and then schedule pickup?
So the way it'll work, we're encouraging through social media posts and press releases, and we'll start to push those more this week. Between ten and fifteen feet of the roadway, definitely not right on the road, these guys would not have fun with time with that, but relatively off the road, but within reach of equipment, within ten or fifteen feet of the road. And right now, the focus has been on public roads. We're having a conversation with them about private subdivisions, and so we don't have that, that agreement there yet, but we're working to get that as well, where they can go on, on private subdivision roads.
So more information to come as we, as we know?
Yes, sir. We're trying.
All right, you have the questions? On favor say aye. Aye, your votes last time. Okay, so item B, this will be building inspection fees. Mr. Wu, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. This is a big area for us that we're seeing already, especially with electrical issues, you know, limbs falling on, you know, service lines and things. We have had also a couple of folks that have already been able to get a contractor to come in that have been seeking a permit for home repairs, and so would ask that you would waive these fees related to the storm, whether it's electrical or...
Motion to waive structure.
Second. Discussion on favor say aye. Aye, your votes last time. Okay, thank you, Jim. Let's go to item C. This is county emergency staffing policy. Mr. Wu?
Okay, this one, this one's a little more complex, and so I'll slow down on this one. Several years ago, probably seven or eight, it's been a while, that board adjusted our policy for when we had an office closure. And fortunately for us, when we've had a closure, it's usually been for winter weather. There have been times where we've had tropical issue storms and things. Before that change, or since that change, county staff have not been penalized in, when there's been a closure, meaning if the office was closed, they did not have to take vacation, sick leave, comp time, that sort of thing. That board felt that sometimes if, every time that closure was out of their control, they should not be penalized for something out of their control, whether it was an act of God or a power failure or something else. And so we have noticed, and this is something staff have been actually researching before Helene, but here we are. Several counties had what we have had, but they've also recognized that there are people still working during an event. And so again, you've got folks that cannot get to work, that are still being compensated because of that policy. And then you have folks that are working during the event, whether they're working at EOC, whether they're working down at our solid waste facilities or what have you. So in, in order to recognize that work that those folks are able to do, I wanted to look at a way to, in a way, compensate that time. And so the example we've seen in other counties, Henderson and Buncombe are two close by, is that they, again, they're paying everyone, but during that time, for rate, for hours worked before overtime, that's a whole other issue we can, we can address. But any hour from zero to forty, what we're asking for is that you create essentially, call it a disaster leave, whatever it might be, where the example presented is essentially leave that those employees would be granted, equivalent to the hours they worked during the event. And so it is since, sits in the system, and they're allowed to use that in lieu of comp time, in lieu of vacation time for, for that time they work. The example we've seen, Buncombe, for example, and I believe Henderson, that leave expires after one year of earning. You don't have to do that, but that's what they do. The example also does not create a cash value to it. So again, for vacation leave, that is accrued. Once an employee leaves, they're paid out the hourly rate times the hours. It also does not, in other counties, convert to sick leave like vacation does. So it's essentially, it's valued, but it doesn't have a payable value at the end of employment, whether it's a retirement or departure.
And this is standard to Buncombe, Henderson, and what other counties are doing, Ashley?
From what we can tell, yes, sir.
And it terminates after one year.
That's the example that was presented, just where it does vanish after one year.
One year from the date of the...
Event.
Event, yes. I'm good with it.
I am too.
Okay, what's, what's where you're at?
Move and approve.
Second. Discussion on favor say aye. Aye, your votes last time. Okay, let's go ahead and move to item D, Helene cost.
Thank you. There are no costs here. Just to be clear, we do not have a dollar amount for any costs, so that headline could be misleading. We're working on cost estimates for our own purposes, also for some of our elected officials, really just to try to wrap our head around some of the early cost. And so what, I just wanted to remind you, this is an area of expertise, especially from Mr. Keller. But just for, for your awareness, how things will work. Say, under FEMA reimbursement, which we're very blessed in North Carolina, I hope all states are this way, but in North Carolina, the state covers the twenty-five percent non-federal share of FEMA relief. So the county has never been required to provide that non-federal share, and will not happen this time either. So the categories on your paper there, under emergency work, which is typically right after or during an event, under category A, there's debris removal, we talked about, which is very specific. And then category B is emergency protective measures. That can be very general, that can mean staffing time, that can mean we had to build a bridge to get people across from a creek. So pretty much everything that happens very early during the initial hours and days and even weeks of a disaster falls under cat B, category B. And so after that, you start to move into permanent work. And these are things where you're starting to slow down a little bit, you're taking bids, you're taking a little bit more time. So some of these affect us, some do not. But category C is roads and bridges, D is water control facilities, E is public buildings and contents, F is public utilities, G is parks, recreational and other facilities, and skips all the way down to category Z under administrative cost. If I've got my letters right, and Will can correct me, we will have costs perhaps under A. Again, that may change based on the Army Corps arrangement. We will definitely have cat B expenses, category E, G, and Z. Our friends in the town and the city might have public utility, will have public utilities and water control facilities and roads and bridges, but at the county government level, ours are more restrained. So the way things work, typically, we will expend funds upfront. Mr. Keller, if it works that way, or if we contract out, it might be somebody else will do the filings, and we will get reimbursement after time. And as was said, sometimes FEMA will reject even public assistance requests, they usually do. They find something to critique and throw, throw out. They find something to critique and throw, throw out and so we, we appeal and go right back to it. So every expense that we have had and will incur, we will seek reimbursement on. So in addition, there are often state funds that are provided during a disaster for anything that might not be FEMA reimbursable. So if there's anything that fits either the county government, city or town, we'll go after, but especially where there's private interests, where IA is not assisting. Again, Mr. Keller and his team have been very aggressive in going for state funds for things like private bridges in the past for other disasters. So this is very complex work. We, we may need to send out an RFP for the category Z administration. We might not made a determination yet, but having the debris part taken off our shoulders certainly lightens that load.
Okay, comments, questions? There being none, let's move to our next item. This would be item E, Baxter Healthcare Parking Agreement.
Thank you. So it is not news and Ms. Effler talked quite a bit about the Baxter situation. Probably about a week and a half ago, I was contacted by representatives of the company where it seemed early on, they were not going to be able to get folks in the building, employees. But I think they figured out a way, thankfully, to get folks back in there where they could work and, and do some production and other things. But they're not really able to park on site as many as they would like. So we do have the Sandy Andrews Ball Field on 221 North. It's sustained quite a bit of damage during the storm, since it's right there in the North Fork. And so they've contacted us and while our ball field is damaged right now, would not be used right now because it's the off season, they've asked to be able to use it for parking. And so they've agreed to do insurance, they've agreed to return to its prior state, which was pretty rough, at least to that state when they're done with.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. I do want to say that we need to do anything we can to help that facility open up as quick as possible. So all in favor say aye? Aye, and you pose a like sign. Okay. Let's go to item A, under new business. This is Glenwood Parade Road Closure Request.
Moving into other matters for a few moments here, the Glenwood Ruertan Club is going to have their annual Christmas parade on Saturday, November 30th. Again, you do not have road maintenance responsibility, but you do have the ability to close a state road if you adopt an ordinance, which is.
We do that every year.
Yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye? Aye, and you pose a like sign. Let's go to item B, under new business. This is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Voting Delegate. So Mr. Wooten, lead us out on that.
Yes, sir. The Legislative Goals Conference, they've moved, it used to be January of the year, they've moved it in November to give more time to put the advocacy package together, be November 14th and 15th this year. I know Mr. Green has served before, Mr. Allison has been as well. So whoever you would like to nominate would, I'm sure, represent as well.
Okay. Let's press the board. Who's got a desire?
Good again. I nominate Mr. Green.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye? Aye, and you pose a like sign. Okay. Let's go to item C, Budget Reports. Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. This is just an update this month, there are no budget amendments this time. So if you have any questions about the property tax report or the sales tax, you can just let me know.
Okay, let's move to item D. This is administrative items. Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir.
And again, shortlist this time as well. There's EMS write-offs that are non-collectible accounts and one NEVO water system leak request.
Moving approved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye? Aye, and you pose a like sign. Okay. Let's go to tax matters, item E.
Thank you. You have a couple of discoveries there this month as well as a couple of releases related to our tax department.
Okay, let's press the board.
Moving approved, tax matters.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye? Aye, and you pose a like sign. Okay. Now, next item is item F that was added. This is the animal control matter.
Yes, there's some, I guess, language, concerning language that I would like to be clarified by the planning board on our policy, our animal control policy and ordinance. And so it would be my suggestion or my motion to send that back to the planning board again and let them review some of the language in order to give us a better interpretation on certain policies.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor say aye? Aye, and you pose a like sign. Okay. We're down to just a comment now. Mr. Coates, have anybody signed up back there, sir? No one else signed up? Are there any reports, communications from management to commissioners?
Just a general point I'll make, and I've talked to our department leadership, is Mr. Keller talked about with this response, it's going to be a long journey for many of our residents that lost homes and businesses. And it's been said so, so well that whether it's a FEMA representative or state representative, and definitely a county or city or town, or chamber or other community group, I mean, folks still have to endure that loss alone. And so I'm, I'm proud to work in organization where we do value our folks and are going to work with them. I have also said that in a, in a lot of ways, we've kind of gotten back to business and say we're selling license plates and tags and, and trying to get people back on our parks and trails and things when we can, when it's safely. And so it, it might seem like at times that we've moved on back to the before times, but we're still going to have to help and work with our folks that have suffered. So it, it might be a challenge as we move forward, but I know we've got a good staff to do that. And so just ask folks to bear with us on, on both sides of it, whether they're affected or not, we will continue to serve the best we can.
And I do want to say and recognize, Ashley, he was down and seen it and a host of other county staff were in that building and making, receiving calls, were working very hard and worked very long hours down there. And I just, sitting in a couple of those calls, William, where you had each entity give a report, and that was amazing just to be there to listen to that. The degree of information being shared was outstanding and the group and the people assembled in that room sharing information. I mean, you've got your college president, he stayed down there along with your school superintendent. You had, Kim was down there, so you were there for sure the whole.
Sheriff was there.
Sheriff was there. I mean, it's just, we can't even start, start naming names or we'll leave people out. But I mean, I do want to say, Ashley, though, thank you for being down there and, and staying on the ship and making sure that any, anything that the county could do to help or aid, you were there to move that forward. So we do recognize that too. So thank you for what you did, I'll say. Okay, do you have any questions to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye? Aye, and you pose a like sign. Me, it's adjourned. Thanks for being here tonight.